So, and then also ordinance number 29, 2015, we're also holding.
Same thing, right.
Don has informed me that Tom Hanslick is working on this mock agreement with, very hard, they're working on it to bring something to the floor next week.
Well.
At our meeting, so.
Something to the meeting.
Right. So, just so everybody knows that Tom is working on it, so if you have any questions or want to know anything, you might want to talk to Tom. Don, do you want to say anything about this, about the map that we were just talking about?
No, except that I know that he wants to make sure it does what he wanted from Dave. So, when it's ready, I'll have to look at it.
All right, I'll talk to him whenever he wants to talk.
Okay. Resolution number 36, 2015, and that's a resolution approving the mayor's removal of Scott Swab as director of finance. We're holding it at first, we're still waiting on the final investigation process to come through.
We need a date for that to be done.
Well, I don't have an exact date, there were some, there was something this week where he was trying to schedule some interviews internally and I, Don, I don't know if Diana not being here made that difficult to you or not.
Actually, we talked only to term that he's welcome to government anytime he wants, as long as he tells Diana who he's going to be.
What I'm saying is, if Diana wasn't here, you mentioned it in your email, so I don't know if he was waiting for Diana to return, but she's done today, as I understand.
She is back.
So, there may have been a couple of days there, I'm not sure, so we'll find out when I talk to him.
So, does he have an estimate once the interviews are done?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be, the interviews have to be completed, I'm assuming now we're talking next week rather than part of this week. And then, with that in mind, we'll probably be looking at, you know, the end of the following week to get the report.
So, it's a week after the interviews, okay.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance number 38, 2015, Sylvia.
Yeah, this is the revised, yeah, this is the revised records policy, I went back and looked at the, after Tom Hanslick had talked about, you know, the potential for medical records and other records that might be at risk.
I thought we were holding this for the work session on Thursday. This was another thing where we had asked him to put together what's there today by state law, city policies, and what this is proposing, and that was a request that was made before I voted on this, I'd really liked to, we were going to hold it, and we were going to have discussion around state law current policy and proposal policy.
Jan, in a couple of weeks, I believe it's going to be out, there's a new public records policy that the state.
It's already out.
It is out, yeah, they were, they hadn't released it as of a couple of weeks ago because I was in contact.
So, why don't we wait until we get that?
So, we'll just get a copy, we'll have, we'll print a copy, yeah, we'll print a copy.
Under conditions, we hold this at first until we have that, and we also have the law department to do, make sure that anything we propose is not detrimental to state law.
I'm not objecting to you holding it, that's not a problem, what I will tell you is, I checked into what is in fact the current policy of the state, and anything where there is a federal law, which, for example, with medical records, that's automatically excluded as a public record, those portions that identify medical records, that kind of thing. So, you don't have to, you don't have to introduce it into a policy here because it's already, it's already built into the Ohio policy, but we can wait a week, no problem.
I think we need to wait until the state produces a review done by the law.
Right, I was waiting for it to come out, but if Sylvia knows it came out, I'm going to go print it myself.
Yeah, it's actually on the auditor of state website.
Okay, so we'll hold it. Okay, ordinance number 39, it's an ordinance approving and editing and inclusion of the certain, okay, there it is.
No, that's not, that was from.
That's a cut and paste, no, no, why is that? It's not the agenda.
That's not, this is, that's not this week's agenda.
It goes to 38 to 40.
Right, the 39, I thought we went through.
This is that other one, wait, keep this here, she put this.
Okay.
Okay, so, Jan, I'm going to have you take the ordinance number.
No, we're into 40.
We're into 40, and ordinance, yeah, Dave's into 40, and ordinance amending the current appropriations ordinance to appropriate funds for full-time human resource personnel administrator for the city of Macedonia. It's ordinance, and we're on second reading.
Sounds good. Betsy's phone, just show you the work.
Did you, you did some interviews already, Don?
Well, I have a maybe.
Betsy left on last week, or when did she leave?
Her last day was yesterday.
Okay.
She'll be in here someday doing her table.
Did Betsy help you do the interviews, Don?
Boy, well, actually, she, the person that was interviewed was somebody that went through Betsy first, and then I interviewed, because Betsy was with her niece who had a very, very devastating heart, and she was only 18.
Oh, all right.
We're all recording here, we're talking about this.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so, we're at second reading on that.
Nick is not here.
No, Nick's not here, so I'm going to give this to Jan, ordinance number 41, 2015, and that's for a public records clerk, the man asking for.
All right, just so I have this straight, we're going to go right down to ordinance number 40, and Dave's going to do 40.
Yes, Dave's doing 40, we're going to keep it the same.
Except for Nick, who isn't here.
Right.
Just switching.
Jan's going to take that.
What are we doing?
Is everybody okay with the second reading?
All right.
All right. Ordinance number 44, 2015, I'll take that, that's an ordinance authorizing and redirecting the mayor to enter into a contract with the specialized construction for the 2015 repair of various streets designated for the 2015 road program. And Nick, do you have anything to say, unless I see your email?
Thank you for listening, too. It was really good when you were talking about.
The one they were submitted by, early level contract.
It was included in everyone's package.
Yeah, Sylvia, you could, go on it.
There was.
Oh, yeah, I did too.
So, specialized construction is an expert in that field.
And we've used them before.
Last time we were in town war, maybe they were a subcontractor, which is pretty easy, providing a supply contract on the south side, which specialized construction, they did all the pavement recycling, which is, they're all on the contract.
Which job did they work on?
South Freeway.
South Freeway was a big, big job where they had to go real deep, that's probably trying to do something.
Could you clarify, did they actually do the paving or the?
They did the paving and recycling.
The recycling, which means pulling it up?
Yeah, they ground it up, stabilized, they injected and shaped it to pad.
Okay. All right, I have a question about, we only got two bids on this, do you know why that is, it seems?
Because of the mandate of construction that we're writing for. If we were doing a repair and resurfacing, if we can't go on these streets, then you've got total reconstruction, right in the middle is where we are scoping, so we're recycling this up. There are too many contractors that are qualified, you've got to work, so.
How long was the bid out for?
It has to be two weeks, I don't remember.
And so, only two or five?
Yeah, and the, I noticed that one of them was actually about a 1%, 0.5% below your estimate, and the other one was 11 and a half percent.
Right, over 10.
Yeah, and do you know why there was that much variance, if you have any idea, Don?
Yeah, the bid had to cash, you could see the price.
I did see the price of those.
Making the traffic items that come in a little bit, depending on how the guy's going to do the job, they get a lot more money making the traffic. But the asphalt prices were pretty consistent, the recycling prices were consistent.
But it's a variation there.
And if we award the bid, you know the questions that they, when would they begin?
Oh, how it ends.
Because you know, that's what the rest, we award the bid, how quickly will they begin, where would they begin, and can we?
We've got to get the contract executed, issue notice to proceed, we have pre-construction meeting, contract ready, get all the docs and correls, see what their next assignment is, they have 60 days to put the contract, so once they, once the issue notice to proceed and they start classifying, they have 60 days, I don't anticipate it's going to take 60 days to do this work.
Okay, so we award, if we award it, 60 days.
They start out May first, they're going to be done by May 1, the contract will be done by May 1.
And then mayor, I guess I would ask, is once we have the start date, that on the website, and of course, I know Chuck is not here, but for Nancy, that we would produce, which gets next?
One thing we'll need to do first, which we've already started, was we need to get the crossover stuff. You don't want to do the crossover until that is all, I ordered pipe, pipe to do next week, and saw cut should be done next week, and then again, and then even, you know, once they get started, we can do it.
It's only because then if we can make sure that everyone's aware where we're at, even though some of these roads are more residential, they cut through.
They could start, certainly, they could start like Highland Road.
Yeah, they're so used to us being near the cash.
There's nothing to do, but then we'll do.
You do not have crossovers on Highland, is what you're saying?
Right, yeah, they could start there, and then we have Air Lane, just one there, that we're going to do first, and then they do Air Lane Westwood, and then Highland Homes, while they're doing those streets, we'll be in Highland Homes, doing those crossovers.
We can just get a lot of the website, and then the mayor could talk to the factory, you can hold it to effects on the website, that people are aware of where they're going to see the trucks and.
There's going to be disruption, obviously, as you're even replacing the crossovers.
Everywhere.
So, if we can, I do know that on NICSOL, they have tended to give you that information, that might be the best thing, because we found.
We usually like to sign the statement, whether we're a week, five days, or whatever.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right.
And I'll be working with Nick totally, you know what contract, and what we require the handle of a residential, if we have a schedule, a person.
That's good.
Do you have any flaggers, estimates to do of the summer?
Well, I'm going to.
I'm going to give you a second reading. So, would it be fair to say you're going to start the crossover work?
Soon as I get that pointed in from Columbus.
Which you're expecting to see, what, next week for the project?
Hopefully, it'll be in next week.
Okay, so, if, give them a ballpark idea, we're starting to see some of the work being done next week, just getting preparation for it, and then, you're saying by the end of June, they believe that they would be done, is that?
60 days.
If they start May first, they have to be done.
Okay.
We've already done a bitch.
Well, that's fine, I think, we can give them a ballpark idea.
It'll be kind of like everything we do with construction, the whole weather.
Well, we have a beautiful.
It snowed, maybe?
No problem.
Okay.
Everybody comfortable with three readings, because I would like to go three.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Resolution number 45, 2015, Dave, would you please take that, and that's a resolution confirming the appointments of Christopher Owen to the audit committee to fill a vacancy of the term ending December 30th.
Number 45. Okay. Three readings.
Yes. Thank you for the information that we received about Mr. Owen.
I think Mr. Owen is qualified, in fact, he looks even more qualified to planning commission, if we get a vacancy there. I offered, I just handed out something from one of my fellow members on the school finance committee, who is interested in the audit committee also, and.
Are they already serving on the school committee, though?
Yeah, they're serving on the, so am I, and they are Macedonia resident, and.
I did, I interviewed two people.
I just say he's highly qualified for audit, if you look at the, and I think he should be considered, that's all.
Who cares? A resident is qualified, a resident is qualified to see what, not to see, to see what's happening.
Well, this man is expert, that's all I'm saying, he's expert.
Well, you don't have to be an expert.
Well, I would disagree with that, but let's move on. I'm fine with Mr. Owen.
Okay, motions, other legislative action, this is Sylvia, if you would take this, this is authorizing the appropriation of $2,540 for the general fund and convert fund balance to fund account, the 101, 316, 565.
This is to fund the Earth Day cleanup campaign, Arbor Day celebration, accompanation, okay, bye.
I don't know if you have any, any refresh on that, but we received the grant technically last year, for the call, for the year before June 15th.
Okay.
Our portion of, when you look at this additional funds that you were asking for, really, you already committed $926, you just haven't appropriated, so the actual net amount that you're asking to come over from the general fund is more like 1614. You already, you know, part of the grant that we got from the litter.
So, should we modify this, just say?
No, because the money hasn't been moved over from the, from the general fund, because to get the grant of the 25.
I get you, all right.
We have said, yeah, we're throwing 926, but that hasn't been moved over yet, so now we're moving to 926 and 1614 for the total of that.
I get it, okay, all right, no problem, we'll do it.
All right, I think there's some new, what is, we're starting some new committees or whatever going on, I think that we need to do it by ordinance or resolution for some of these new boards, yeah, the new boards that are coming up right now, I think that it's important that we, you know, we talk about this, because I believe there's the future, what is it done, the future?
Future growth committee, it's a committee appointed by the mayor, it's been that way since.
Yeah, but since, like Dave Eagle pointed out, that these were closed down and stuff, we need to bring them back, and we need to figure out how we're going to bring them, seem to bring them back either by resolution or ordinance.
Why? It's never been done that way.
I think so, I think so.
It wasn't, I can tell you from, the mayor just said we're going to start a committee, people volunteered for the committee, a committee was formed, elected chairman, and went forward, and that's what's happened now, this committee's been formed, and they've elected their chairman, and they're starting to go over, it doesn't need.
Do you know, Dave, do you know?
No, no, I was referring to stormwater, that's, terminate stormwaters.
Now, that's true, it's terms of the future growth committee.
That's done by ordinance, they're not part of the charter, so they didn't really have to be the future growth, and that's why the charter review committee is within the charter.
Well, yeah, that's different from charter.
So, it absolutely needs to.
Well, I know Dave brought this up, so I wanted to make sure that we have some free time, we should talk about it, that, you know, what we need to do, you know, like, well, it's the stormwater, he wants to talk about, he thinks it needs to.
Was this my recollection, Josephine can check, to see if that's what we did or we didn't do, but I thought there was something where the mayor came to council and discussed, and I thought maybe wrong.
Well, we, I did bring it up.
I did hear, I love what he said.
And said, we need to volunteer to form.
Are we talking?
Jan had mentioned it from the Diaz, and I agree with her that it was a good idea to bring the future growth back.
But I have to, we have asked, participate, asked if we can do it, as well as the new person to participate.
I mean, are we talking future growth?
No, no.
No, we're talking about the storm, stormwater.
Stormwater is.
And the future growth is because there was discussion around, since the soccer complex was announced, so it was a way to get more everyone's input for the unfair city and every quadrant, and that was just resurrecting, that original committee was started by you, was it?
No, it was started by children.
What, which one?
That's a wild.
Future growth.
Yeah, that, that goes back into the.
1995.
1995, all right, because I remember reading the future growth report, which you and a number of people were working on.
Well, what they're, what they're up to right now, as long as we're talking about it, they will make recommendations as to what, as citizens, businesses, and we have older people, younger people, business people, residents, a little bit of everything, and then they'll make recommendations to council now, the last two times recommendations were made, they were accepted, but they weren't stumped, luckily, some of the things that were recommended actually came to pass.
But Sunny Zellman has to go for the boulder, so.
Sure.
But they can't do that.
No.
They can make recommend, it's similar to the charter review recommendations.
All right.
And that'll come to council for approval before it does anything, I mean, you have to finally say, they might even change anything, because maybe future growth is not what it's about, it's about maintaining growth, or policing it, or whatever, that's, it's up to them.
I think, one of the things that I noticed, there was some reference to it, that they were talking about bike trails, which has been brought up to me by different HOA groups, that they're interested in, you know, green space and bike trails, I don't know if any of that has come up.
Well, so far, they've had one meeting, they've elected a chairman, they're in the process of registering with the city, as every committee must do.
Right.
All of those things are happening right now, we're getting them information, demographics, all that, so that they know where we're at now, and what it takes to remain the way we are now solving, so, and where they go with that, it's all up to them, there'll be nobody there from any elected officials, it's just more or less people getting together talking about what they'd like to see. Once they're done, they'll put it in writing, we'll see.
Okay, and they're going to have formal meetings, it'll be like open meetings type of meetings?
Yeah, they're open meetings, sometimes my staff will be there, because a planner is very important, so the planner will be working.
But they'll be announced, if, we just want to sit in and listen to what they're saying.
I'm sure you can sit in and listen, they, the chairman was elected, was Kevin Westpers.
Okay, well, Kevin's on the planning commission.
Yes, so, we have people that are planning, so that they can have input as, so, well, you can't do that, or you can't do that, the city planners involved, building departments involved, engineering's involved, you've got all kinds of people that will get involved and give them some data, and then whatever they come up with is.
Well, that's fine, you know, I don't say, but I don't personally have any issue with the future growth committee, and the, on the drainage and sewage control committee, I do think that that's something we should probably formalize, if we're going to reconstitute it, or the other alternative would be to really have an open meeting on, with, and ask the residents to come maybe in the community room and talk about what we, what the previous report has said, that report that we had the engineers and everybody work on, and the priorities that were there, and I remember there was a resident survey in that to try to gauge the impact, as you recall, of, you know, if we have a stormwater problem, is it, is there water in your house because of it, is it water on your back of your lawn, what is it, I remember reading through that, and they had a way of prioritizing based on the damage that was being done to the residents, so, I think, this struck me as a pretty solid effort, and I'm wondering if maybe we just shouldn't invite everybody to come in and talk about it from the, who are in the city who have an interest in it.
All right, that's not a bad idea, except, tonight we're going to have, this is coming from the NEORSD.
Uh-huh, sure.
And he's notified us, he will be here tonight, and there has been some problems between them and the city before.
Of course.
All right.
But that's still in court, right?
That's still in court, but the thing about that is that if the NEORSD is going to be our stormwater people, all stormwater stuff has to go through.
Well, I know that, I understand.
So, we have our plans and what we want to do, and in order for us to do that, that they are supposed to give us part of the money back.
Yes.
And the court, the court fight was how much, well, we're getting 25% back instead of 7%, but I'd have liked to seen 50%, because 50% back would have given us the figure we needed to move forward with the DSCC plan.
But then they don't approve or deny what we're doing, because it's our project, it's just the identification of the money.
They have, they have all the same.
See, before they.
Yeah, well.
So, you're saying that if.
So, now, if the sites are money they've made, they.
The thing we did, so, I think, you know, before it jumped up, in the court system, we did have some projects that council authorized us to apply for our cost of your dollars, and if, like, when you're able to utilize that money.
I think we are able to, so we have to get their oversight, because part of the discussion, they give us money, we can go do our own projects.
Oversight there so far, you have to apply for your money for your projects, they give me the blessing.
But they don't have to manage the project.
Yeah, you manage it, but they get involved, you know, every step.
I just want them back here, like, they, when they originally talked about, they would be the end all of everything, but we knew all the projects, and we talked about.
Projects, projects that would, that would be considered original, they would be, so all along, if you credit, they will handle those.
Or take your credit, because, yeah, that, that makes. That's what made it, before you made a pass, because it also slowed down the bus, and he was pregnant, yeah.
All right, Nick, so what I'm interested in is, just to clarify with you, we're talking about any money that they're collecting, they are controlling what you do with that money, even though they provide 25% back to us.
Correct.
We have other money that we appropriate, this year, for example, for our lady. Are you saying that they have to approve that money? Okay, so.
No, just to, if you're applying for your cost of your money, which is 25%.
So, basically, that's.
The mayor, you have to, they're blessed when you get through.
So, they're not approving an overall stormwater plan for every municipality other than?
Kind of yes and no, they'll get involved with a few local watershed issues and how it affects.
Okay, well, I get that, right, the water.
Projects that you may be funding on your own without the cost of your dollars, if it, if it impacts the regional marsh, they will.
What, okay, but that's fair enough.
Kind of like if we take the money back.
Well, actually, yeah, they, they control the money, and therefore, they control the project.
Well.
Say, we're going to give us the money, and then we get to do, you know, that this court case, is that the money would come back to us, they don't, we don't have to ask for, it's our piece of what is set up.
It's like a grant, if you apply to projects for your money, you should, you should make sure it's consistent with the overall marsh.
But you're right, that depression was given elsewise originally, I think, but I understand what you're saying, in other words, they're saying, okay, so, we've collected this fee, and now, we're going to give 25% to you for your preferred project, but.
You got to ask us.
Which is not the original intent.
You know what, the guy that's coming is going to speak, why don't you ask?
Okay, that's fine.
Because is it now finalized with the courts, that we can't even see, you can't ask for the money?
No, how it's going to work, you can ask how it's going to work, how will it?
I was hoping you said we could get the money.
We did already have processes.
The court case is not done.
And then, when they're in court.
The court case wasn't done yet, so we can't ask for money, we could just say how it's going to work, but we don't know when it's going to work.
Or if it's going to work.
Court case could last a couple of years.
Yes.
And I could direct back to the center.
Right, if I understand what the court case says, they could possibly say, no, NEORSD cannot collect that fee.
That's right.
So, if we would, there would be no money collected in the first place, except we would have some residual money that was originally collected.
Right.
But they would not, right, without interest, right, so it's not, well, what is interest nowadays anyway? We're not getting anything.
Anything more than, better.
Then zip, okay, happily.
Well, this was a surprise, as we thought, because we had it here at the table, just to make sure.
Well, it'll be interesting to see, but this has not been resolved, so we're, we're proceeding with, what I was referring to was, the original studies we did, which were pretty thorough. It was pretty thorough.
All the, the original studies are done. The engineers have the program, and they've been updating the program since that time. Why don't you talk about what we've done?
It's a good start. So, preliminary plan, identify the problem areas. A lot of those are on your bench, all the waterway, which would be eligible for your cost of.
Yeah, the engineer's pretty.
We have, and Mike and I, from the mayor's office, are looking for a agreement, to the regional suite of districts, to make sure that, once it's satisfied with the, or if you want it to be, one of the first communities out of the gates to get one of the bigger regional projects that they did commit to you. Because on our own, some of those projects on North of the pledge road, are priced after a amount of.
Twenty-three, it's better when you've got more than one. I don't know if, oh, would, I don't know if their participation.
But like mentioned, the plan, it's a good start, and requires updating, a lot's changed in the community since that initial study was done. It's like any other.
Well, it'd be updated, I'd say, yeah. I think, in terms of getting input from the residents, they had a good method of trying to get input, because they were.
The committee worked very hard in talking to their neighbors and to every community member, representatives from各个 county.
Correct.
The citizens.
So, I'm just saying, that'd be good to have, I mean, to go through that. And then, if you wanna recommend a case, make a rational, by the way, you did say something about the, at least Mike, at the marsh on T-Team, about Arlay's. Whether we could redirect the.
And we didn't look into it.
And what did you say?
Now, because you're gonna end up not being able. The Guadalupe basin, the elementary design that accommodates stormwater, some storage to handle the basin, they will hold things back before it discharges. We looked at the potential route route back itself, there's no ditches, we have to analyze the storm storage that live there, see what the downstream impacts. Long story short, my opinion is, taking your problem, we will be able to redirect it.
And you've got a comparable?
I'd have to look at the whole number of things, and see, but my, my theory on that way about the situation, is I disagree with Nick, but if the water was going there in the first place, it would have been issue, I don't mind it being out, and that's what I'm gonna see.
Okay, well, then let's just let that play out then, or, okay? Because there's a significant difference in cost. We want at least have a.
If it's something as simple as three to a ditch or something like that. He works, he works.
Okay, got it. Good enough.
Okay, and Nick, you brought some rocks here today, from the creek. Would you like to talk about the rocks?
Jim and I went back through there, through the stream corridor last week, it wasn't too perfect. Just to get an update, it's been a while since we've been up there. This is the perfect time to go through this fall, and just answer, and plenty of what you need to see, which is the rains, it doesn't fall, so, just collecting some samples downstream and upstream. Get your hands dirty.
I'm not getting my hands dirty, I thought it's in class.
It gives you an idea of what's in the stream.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's under arrest.
Oh, he still is under arrest.
That's, that's, that's what's in that stream, gone to Twinsburg Township.
What is it?
That's you. As good as the picture is, it doesn't.
Yeah, well, don't say anything, really.
If anybody, I, I understand. Pictures sometimes don't do things justice. If anybody's willing to hike through there, I mean, I know Jim wasn't willing to go back.
Okay, well, I may take your one. I'm going, I'm gonna be in the 5K too, but I'll be in the back of the 5K.
It's a true stretchers trip. Where are your boots? Couple of the samples were taken from the lower half of the street. So, here's Lake Forest.
Okay.
You're walking upstream, you've got a couple of tributaries, Medina Supplies up north.
I got it. This is Twinsburg Township.
These are their settling ponds for their facility. They discharge through a railroad car. They come through this tributary area.
And this the township?
No, this is, this is the railroad track. I don't, municipal boundaries aren't on, are not on.
It's clearly, it has to be below this, because that's the.
Well, here's, here's your corporate boundary, really. Like, the rear propellons on Lake Forest are also your corporate boundary. So, by the time you, you walk a couple hundred feet upstream, you're already at Twinsburg Township. Okay. So, a lot of these, a handful of those samples were taken from the streambed, the lower portion. The photo that you see here.
Yes.
It's, it's, you get a little bit upstream of this first tributary area. This tributary, which comes from the southeast portion, has no evidence of sand, nothing.
So, basically, there's water coming from several directions.
This picture is taken standing right around here.
Okay.
This, this tributary goes to the north, which goes to Medina Supply. This tributary goes this path.
This path, and there's an, there's actually a second path here.
Although, although, right now, there's, with the Ohio Edison, issues going on, there's some staging activity.
Oh, really?
Power lines?
Power line changes?
Yeah, there's staging, they've got some construction.
So, we've got two major, and then this one, and then you have this other.
So, this, this watershed is roughly a hundred acres coming into this point. This is this notch right here.
Okay.
About a hundred acre drain line from several different areas. The only place that you have sand evidence, obviously, aside from downstream in Lake Forest, is through this bond, this corridor right here. And that's where the bulk of these.
It's on the surface, right.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I mean.
It's on the surface, because you're looking at it right there. Okay. And you're saying that this is the obvious source? You're saying that you see this as.
There's no evidence.
No evidence that you can see on the surface of any sand movement.
Just Medina Supply.
Right, exactly, that's what it's. So, this is all coming together right here, and it's going into the Lake Forest? And, Forest, you know, there was this Steve Knotts, I believe, who has a problem over there, as well as Mr. Matt Adjasek, and a couple of the neighbors that surround this mansion.
This is just his corporate pipe, that's the, it's just a corporate pipe.
It's just, I think, his property.
Yeah, it's a drive. His drive, the corporate pipe. It's actually, not, it's shaping, yeah, it needs a little.
I wouldn't say it's failing.
But it's not even.
It needs maintenance on anything else.
Why would he? It's a simple, I guess they want us.
Yeah, it's his property, so, he bought the house.
Well, it needs, there are gaps, they, between his driveway and the top of the pipe. They want us to fill in, and, you know, caulk it, or whatever we need to do, just to take that void out.
Does it go under the driving?
It just only goes for a little bit, maybe about that much into the pipe, so.
What you do is tamping some dirt in there.
Water, ground.
Some kind of ground, mortar, ground, concrete, ground, and that's it. I mean, this is stuff that, me personally, homeowners should look at some of this stuff.
Right.
And, well, I have to say, my.
Although, we've denied a lot of people.
And it's also, I have to be careful, because if I start taking care of others, I got to.
I'm agreeing very much with you, that we need to be reasonable about what we're telling you. If we're not, if this is on his own property, and it's not something that we're causing, you know, what is normal?
It's just, we would make this one unique versus somebody else's drive. The size, so.
It's a big hole.
It's a big hole.
Well, because of the water situation.
Well, it's gotta convey the strength.
I have a gun, this here.
Okay, so you're saying, this is all coming down here, you see evidence, say, I'm on the surface coming this way, you don't see anything here, it looks black.
You see it on the surface, you see it on the streambeds, the embankments are carved out three, four feet in places.
Okay.
Seeing some.
And it's just, it's all sandstone, whatever you call it there, it's all sandstone.
Jim's, Jim's photo that.
Okay, so, when you go down into here, then the real issue is.
It's classic example, I mean, so.
So, what, what is it that we're saying about collecting or doing something about slowing that down? Is that what we're talking about?
It's gotta be slowed down in Twinsburg Township.
The recommendation was, you know, the detention basin upstream, so you, he'd wanna collect this runoff.
Start talking, and then we talk.
They don't have any, they don't have any retention based.
I'll go with you.
That doesn't mean they didn't do underground.
You, there's no evidence, one year ago. So, when, this, this used to be a Girl Scout cap, so, they weren't worried so much about the food, but what they're showing here is, we would have, something would have to be done inside.
You're still gonna have sand that you should be, right? You can control rate with which.
Well, the rate, obviously, that's the issue, not, not the retention.
So, it's natural runoff, it's in Twinsburg Township, it's not Medina Supply, and we didn't have a complaint before because we didn't have houses. That's the natural flow of water, based on the topography.
Yeah, but when that, when, when it all started too, though, if you go back years, because I spent like six hours down at the county, when you go back and look at the old drawings back when it was the Girl Scout, it was small, and it has gotten larger and wider, the creek has.
Well, the other possibility is very simple. You're putting a lot of new construction back here. All that runoff has to go somewhere, right? I mean, you've got, I create an asphalt and everything, that's now much more impervious, and that's really probably what's driving it, not the natural.
Well, you know, no, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna make a comment. I'm not even sure if you could put a retention basin back here that would be effective, because.
Can move and maintain.
Yeah, well, wait, but, but where, if you're gonna do a retention basin, you're gonna be catching the water off of the road, but the water's coming from such a wide area. Can you even do a retention basin, do what you want?
That would be, I mean, that has been the next step in this, which is the feasibility study, try and identify that. Right? You have to, you have to catch it before, you know, when it's coming off of this paved road.
But looking at the photographs, and, and some of your elevation lines, it doesn't look like it's a really steep area, it's a pretty.
It gets, it gets steep right, right here, right.
You're saying you want it here, where it's flat, and so you're trying to, you're trying to use a dustpan to get dust off your kitchen floor, you gotta go everywhere.
It would have, it would have.
It would slow down the volume.
It still, the water starts to flow downstream.
Right.
I mean, it's still gotta come through.
To your point, though, Dave, yeah, you're never gonna stop the erosion of those steep orders. You'll never stop it. You may be able to slow it down. Up here are the worst areas, though, where the, it makes a bend in this corridor, and that's what the sandstone layers are washed out about two.
So, they're being washed out even as we speak, you're saying, every time the spring hits?
As we speak, right.
Even at, well, certainly today.
So, you step on this stuff in the street, you drop it, it doesn't take much.
I was gonna say, you're not gonna make a mess to it, because we're gonna have to arrest the mayor, but anyway, so, in essence, I'd just be speculating, but I'm guessing because of all this industrial part of the, that's probably affecting high speed and the volume. Yep. And what used to be something like, like this, is now like, you know, viral, so.
Medina Supply, Ed Pro, EPA fixed it. That was years ago.
Well, the real question is, then, we have, I don't know why Medina Supply would be worried about us taking a sample of it, at this point, because if they corrected everything.
Well, you know, Nick, if, maybe we should take a sample, imagine for examples, down below, if it's dead, we're done.
What, take a sample, what, from two of, two of the lakes here? Well, we could find out if it's funny, that we don't have.
So, you don't need to test, you don't need any petrograph.
No, I know, but, I know, I'm just saying, if you wanna pull it from here.
If it's that.
Well, if it's that simple, then why don't we do that?
Is this from depth, you said downstream? This from David's?
No, this is, Dave, this is right on these ledges.
Okay.
That was completely, the whole.
I don't know.
Well, I've been to.
Well, you're gonna need to test it down here, then you're gonna have to test.
That's why. When you, when you walk this, you can definitely see, there's nothing, it's coming.
You can see stuff here. And these are sandstone formations getting washed.
Right, and they're getting washed, because there's a higher volume of water, and the one email we have, they even state that there's a possibility because of this, here, there's a higher volume of water here, and it's cutting into the, the ledges, it's causing.
And the reason there's a higher volume of water is probably this over here, fundamentally. Okay. You know, and that's the problem, whenever, we've got two, two entities involved here, because we had no impact on what Davis County should do with that water.
I mean, that's a whole other aspect of the study, would need actually nothing there should be touched, because it's designated.
It's a nature preserve.
That's a nature preserve?
No, no, I think, right, you're looking at Twinsburg Township.
Oh, that's over here, yeah.
But over here, if you want us to do that, I can call, I have like five people that are interested in doing this. We can't take samples from here, in the mail, and then write at Matt Adjasek, and confirm those, that'll make everybody happy.
Somebody need to pull it. Shouldn't we? We're taking out the samples.
They, they don't feel.
We've got, they're ready, they said, ain't us.
The trustees, not Medina Supply, but Twins.
Township.
That's not part of their.
No, the township administrator.
I might have, I have, I believe, I, I states.
So, we would notify them that we're gonna be doing, I think it's courtesy to do that.
Well, one thing, to maintain that, to get there, maintain it, do that kind of work.
Yeah, all right, right, so Jim, along that line, it's a perfect segue to put my perspective on this. It's a lot of, you're gonna spend a lot of time, a lot of money, your time, even if you do put a basin in here.
So, Guadalupe costs the work, I mean, that's.
Or more, and then somebody's gotta maintain it, it's gonna take joint, joint cooperation with your neighbor to the east, and, and what's the, as you said many times, you don't have any, there's no flooding, there's no structural flooding in Lake Forest. The biggest concern, in my opinion, would be the plane that, and I don't, it hasn't been substantiated yet, but obviously, if this stuff is washing downstream, eventually, it ends up in the lakes.
Of course it does.
And I, to my knowledge, I don't know that these have ever been dredged, if they have the HOA, they tell you what it costs to dredge them, and usually, these are every five, ten years, what's the cost? If it, if it changes a maintenance schedule on dredging a lake from.
I don't think.
Right. So, even if you were on a five or a ten year cycle, and it, and it increased that cycle by one year, compare the cost of that versus.
Trying to correct.
Half a million to a million, is it the cost benefit worth it?
Well, that's, that's the obvious question. I do think that Twinsburg Township, which approved all of this construction over here.
But we don't know, I mean, we haven't spent, it'd take a lot of time to look into when these properties were developed, what regulations were in place.
Right. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that the idea that they have no responsibility for it is probably not.
Well, they do.
The industrial part was put in over thirty years ago.
Right, right.
So, chances are, they have no responsibility, they go according to law, code back then. The law in Ohio is that the lower guy takes care of the water he gets.
Right, so, I mean. And all the debris and everything else.
And the crap.
You know, if it costs you a couple thousand dollars every five or ten years to dredge You know, if it costs you a couple thousand dollars every five or ten years to dredge this...
Well, obviously, that's something they were talking about, was filling up our retention points. But the other thing is, right in here, you're getting a terrific amount of sand and choking inside of Meda Jasek's property, so...
The only thing, the pipes themselves, and the cullards themselves, we're just getting debris. If I opened it for you today, my men were there today.
It's debris, I know.
It's on our, it's on our watch for debris. There was no debris then, that didn't, there's no sand in the cullard. It's, the sand is not, as far as I'm concerned, the sand is not the issue in those cullards. They're causing any backup of that.
You mean the cullards under the road?
Right. And at Meda Jasek's, this is the inlet for the cullards that go under the road.
Okay, these are going under this?
Mm-hmm, it's right. It's specifically designed to have a dogway to stop all the laws. They stopped here. That's why he had a little flood, you know, backed up and flooded the creek. We opened that up for him, and then opened up.
And it's going through at this point?
Yes.
So, in essence, you're saying, you already have a...
My men have it on their chart, every time it rains, they go to his house to make sure it's not blocked. We, we go to Sue, we go to, there's quite a few that, we all just have, we go there every time there's a heavy rain. We go there, Chevron, oh, pardon, yes, we go by the burrs. We go, we go everywhere, when we see a flood issue, every time it rains, hire them. And then check for any type of blockage, branches, logs, tree roots, whatever it is.
Let me ask you, yeah, I, I see frequently, people at the Coral Bursary or interchange, there seems to be a flog up that occurs, so... Are we, are we saying that's the solution, then, we simply do, we do a kind of maintenance project?
Every time there's a heavy, go and check, clean up as a town.
Which is what you're doing now.
Yeah, which is what you're doing now, yes.
Because the sand doesn't come from...
And he had no water problem.
We stopped the runoff, we don't see the sand going empty, and we don't have any flooding where some of these other places will get metered in houses and that.
Right.
Some people are worried about that.
Well, that was the original report that showed where they were actually flooding the houses, opposed to...
Well, I, I'm fine, I just, the homeowners association is worried about the sand in the lakes coming because of the rocks.
Okay, go that side.
In other words, where the sand would settle, Meda Jasek has rocks. No, it's not allowed by the law, it's not allowed by...
Each of the river and the nature buffer, it's gained the...
It's, it's a result of the pollution, EPA.
That's right, honestly, I'm recording, but it's Ohio Stream Preservation.
Ohio Stream Preservation is, is similar to the...
His claim is that those rocks came down with the affluence, that's what he said.
Another issue.
It's true and not true, I mean, so, but that's what he said.
Well, he actually, before he said anything like that, he had to...
Well, no, he's saying that he didn't have those rocks.
Because the rocks were washed down.
The water comes down.
The rocks threw lots of bangs.
Well, he put the best of the rocks up, but they were in the middle of the...
Is everybody ready?
He's saying, they showed up in that ditch.
So we are ready, though, we're gonna jerk here.
We're gonna jerk, bye.
So, Don, what is that, that someone's coming out of?
Okay, this is your Madison situation.